You got the chairs? Bill ready? Good evening and welcome. Please join us at the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, this is the flag. The United States of America, to the Republic with change, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We have not heard from Mr. Fafalia or Mr. Leon. We assume they're on their way. First item this evening, pardon me, we're going to first have the moment of silence. Get it to come up. Please join me in a moment of silence for Louis Arfrio, a retired employee of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Next item, the CNS High School graduation ceremony for those summer graduates. Please stand.
All right. Good evening. Welcome to tonight's graduation ceremony. Graduates, let me start by congratulating you on this accomplishment. You are here tonight because of the perseverance, and all of us here are extremely proud of you for staying the course as a graduating member of the class of 2017. Let this accomplishment be a reminder that obstacles don't have to stop you from achieving your goals. As you begin the next phase of your life, I would like to share a few parting words of encouragement, as I did with your classmates in June. One, determine what you want to become and see what drives you and commit to it. Your voice matters in this. As Stephen Jobs said, "Your time is limited, so don't waste it living someone else's life." Oftentimes, we become influenced by other people's thinking and our voice gets drowned out. I would encourage you to start taking ownership today and determine what you are passionate about and go after it. In this next phase of your life, you will meet many new people from all walks of life. This is truly exciting. But just as you have done in your public school experience, surround yourself with those that will influence you in a positive way and will not deter you from your goals. Remember, every successful person has a great supporting cast, and this includes the friends that you choose. Along with this, do not compromise the ethics, morals, and values that have been taught to you by your loved ones here tonight. Be confident in who you are and stand firm in your beliefs. Lastly, when adversity happens, I encourage you to challenge it, not waver, as you will learn, grow, and be stronger for it. Graduates, it has been an honor and privilege to serve as your principal, and I wish you much success and happiness. Now, for the presentation of diplomas, and when we call your name, please come up and receive your diploma.
Melody Marlia Edith Bisson. We have Devon Tyler. And Cameron S. Wood.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we're going to ask that you move your tassels. Please stand and move your tassels, move your tassels from right to left. There you go. Audience, please help me in congratulating the 2017 graduates of Cicero North Syracuse High School. Thank you for all for coming. We have a little reception out there in the cafeteria where we were, so please join us.
Next item on the agenda, comments from the audience. We have no one signed up this evening. Board of Education committee reports and comments. Anybody with committee reports, comments?
I can give you a status update.
Give us the status update, sir.
Connie was kind enough to email me, and I'm looking at a draft agenda. When I figure out which counties where we're going to go, I'm going to have a date by the next board meeting.
Okay.
I'll work that out with Connie.
Very good.
That's my goal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mary?
The first policy committee meeting is September 18.
Mary, what time is that going to be? George, Jackie, Alan, none of them, don't you? Superintendent comments, isn't it?
Well, first of all, I just want to really congratulate the five graduates who just left to celebrate with their families. It's always, so, we had a mystery, and it was a good mystery. About three weeks ago, we received word from New York State School Boards Association that some group in our district was one of three districts won a $5,000 award. We were pretty excited about that, but it was a mystery because nobody could figure out which student group it was and who actually did the nominating. So today, we got official word, and we were able to track this down, and we're very excited. It's exploring computer science, and again, we were one of three districts. Boards Association teams up with SUNY Polytech Institute. Actually, the professors there are the ones that hold the applications and choose the winners. We found out today that this group is at Gillette Road Middle School, and a nap, who's one of my special assignment, a coach, admitted it, and it has to do with work that she did along with a teacher, Steve Bacon, about exploring computer science, which was offered in March, and it ran for 10 sessions, and it was an after-school program. So we're really excited about this, and I believe that there's a date set at the end of November for a group to go to Albany and actually receive the award. So that all out, and we'll probably come back and share.
Yeah.
So we'll come back and show that off a bit. So congratulations to them. That is really, really exciting.
Well done. Anything else?
No, we're just, you know, we're getting ready for.
Item five, routine action items, 5A, consideration of approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Education of August 7, 2017, and consideration of classification placement of preschool disabled students certified by the District Committee on Preschool Special Education for 8817. Is there a motion to approve? Jackie, second. Mary, all in favor? Here. Many, many, many items under six. 6A, proposed tax surcharge, reserve increase, and increase to general liability reserve. Don?
Good evening. So in order for us to have a conversation about possibly increasing to reserves, we have to talk a little bit about fund balances. As you folks know, that's where the money would otherwise go if we didn't establish or increase existing reserves. So I have a very brief presentation about our fund balance and reserves. So bear with me as I take you through some numbers. The first line on there was our unassigned fund balance as of June 30 of 16, and you can see that that was about 4.9%, $7.5 million. As the Board knows, we've worked hard over the last number of years since the Great Recession to build up our fund balance, in a sense, to prepare for the next rainy day if it should come. Now we look at, so what's happened over the last 12 months leading up to June 30 of 2017? So fortunately, our revenues were in excess of our expenditures by a little over $2 million, so that would roll into fund balance. As the Board knows, we increased our appropriation of fund balance when we put the budget together for the 1718 school year. Instead of appropriating $950,000, we appropriated another, an additional $1,750,000 for a total of $2.7 million. So we have a large appropriation this year, and that needs to be considered in our fund balance as it is here. And the next two line items are what? Sure.
What's a non-spendable?
So the non-spendables is a very small amount of money that is set aside for deposits and things like that that we can't, we can't spend. So it's part of our fund balance, but we can't tell you it's available for other things. And actually, it's quite a small amount of money, but it's called the non-spendable, and it actually works into that, into that difference. The vast majority of the change, though, as I said, was the $1,750,000, so it's less than $1,000 and change impacting this. So the next two line items are the increase, proposed increases in tax surcharge, reserve, and the general liability reserve. And in order to talk about that, I wanted to tell you a little bit about each reserve and what the rationale is. So as you know, local taxpayers can test the assessment of their property. Often, the biggest ones that we focus on are those that are commercial properties, and if, most of them are represented by BSNK, our law firm, but if they have a conflict of interest, if it's one of their clients and there's a conflict, they ask Farrar-Fiorenza, or we do, ask them to represent those matters. So we had five matters with Farrar-Fiorenza that totaled $733,000, and we had 13 matters with BSNK that totaled $1.2 million. So that's the exposure, as calculated by our attorneys, to what the impact could be on our school taxes, on our tax levy. And so those are potential refunds that we'd have to make. So since our exposure's over $2 million, we're recommending that we increase our reserve to $2 million to cover that exposure, and that's, that would be an increase of $546,000. Is there any questions on tax surcharge? So you understand that, what that's for and why we're recommending the increase? The general liability reserve, this is an interesting one. We've always had a very small general liability reserve, under $50,000. And every time I talk to somebody, another financial person, our auditors, anybody that knows school finance, always, it raises their eyebrows, and they say to me, "Why do you have such a small general liability reserve?" And I said, "Truthfully, we haven't been able to afford to put money in a general liability reserve." And so if you think about our very litigious society we live in today, and you think about the amount of things we have that are self-insured, self-insured health insurance, self-insured workman's comp insurance, there are, all of our insurance policies have certain limitations. So it's very prudent for an organization of almost $160 million budget to have a million dollars in a liability reserve. It's, it's not going to change the world for us, but it could have an impact in a year where we do suffer a loss, and we don't have to take it out of our operating funds. So it just prepares us for the future.
Don, I have a question.
Sure.
So the revenues in excess of expenditures, that's the taxpayer's share?
So what that is, is, as you know, when we put our $158 million budget together, there's thousands of line items in that. And some of those line items are state aid. The one line item that's always pretty darn accurate is the tax levy. We never get more from the taxpayers than we levy. So that one's pretty solid. But sometimes, the timing of when we get our state aid, or the adjustments that the state may make in our state aid affects our revenues. On the expenditure side, sometimes we're, you know, we have a warm winter, and we don't spend as much on heat, or fuel, energy costs, I'm sorry, gasoline and fuel costs are lower. So we just had a year where our expenditures were lower than we expected, and as a result, our revenues were higher than our expenditures by $2 million. And so when you look at all those numbers, including the two proposed increases to reserves, it brings us to an unassigned fund balance. Again, that's the district savings account, not designated for anything specific. That's $6.3 million, and that's 4% of our budget. And that's the target level that New York State would like us to be at, and so the numbers seem to work.
Don?
Yeah?
One thing, the reserve funds, they're not spent. Those are only there if we need to spend them.
That's right.
Right now, they're in just another part of a bank account.
Perfect timing. I've got a little slide here that shows the balances of the reserves. So we've talked about tax surcharge and the general liability reserve, and where they were at the beginning of 1617, and here's where we're proposing they'd be for our audit on the right-hand side, June 30, 2017. And so all of these reserves are set aside for those specific purposes, and we, you know, we can't use them unless we, someone of those items come up.
So those are all in interest-bearing accounts?
Yep, they are. Unfortunately, interest rates have been pretty low, but you, if I, in each of those accounts, there are small amounts of interest in there.
One bond to another?
No, they're, it's all safe.
Negatively impact?
I'm sorry.
Wouldn't negatively impact?
No.
Okay.
The other one, I would just tell you about the debt service really quick. Sometimes when the district raises, sells bonds, we sell those at a premium. We actually, the interest rate is so good that we're able to sell them at a premium. And when we do that, we actually put that money in debt service. So any proceeds from a bond offering is going to ultimately go to service debt. We don't get to use that for other things, and that's what that's included in the debt service reserve. So this puts us in a much better financial situation than we've been in as of the end of our audit year. That's why we're recommending that.
Don, the tax surcharges? How can, I mean, is there any way we can, we pretty much say this is the amount that we're going to be having to deal with, and then?
So what happens is people make claims.
What if one comes down? What if one of those comes down?
Well, so these are all the known claims for open tax years, and these are, these are the assessments of our attorneys as to what our exposure is. And so we wanted to make sure we at least had enough money to cover what a possible settlement would be. We hope to settle for less, but our attorneys believe that this is our exposure.
So we don't know if there's anybody, any other business going to kind of do this, or is there a certain?
They may. There's, every year, there's a time period over which people can contest their taxes. So yeah, I'm sure someone else is going to come, and as a matter of fact, Connie is probably shaking her head behind me. We've received since the end of the year numerous petitions for their assessments to be evaluated, and we send those to either Farrar or to BSNK.
Is it something that's increasing all the time?
What's that?
Is it something that's increasing over time? I mean, there are more?
Well, I'm going to talk a little bit of our tax rate, tax rate in a minute, and we have over $30 million more in property value in our school district this year versus last year. So assessments are constantly, you know, we're in a, two of our towns are full value assessments, so they're constantly being assessed, and every time you assess someone's property, there's a chance they may disagree with the assessor. And again, I want to reiterate for the public who might be listening, I know you guys know that school district has nothing to do with assessments. You know, we're just kind of along for the ride here. Any, any other questions or comments?
That capital reserve that we set aside, we haven't done anything with that in the past two years.
Great, great question. We actually have, the Board just approved that we're going to do a roof project and the resurfacing of the tennis courts, and we're going to take money out of that reserve to support that project.
So we're going to take money out, but we're not, what I'm asking is about adding money to that?
We, when the, when you folks and the voters approve that reserve, you approved a $2.5 million reserve, so we can't, even if we spend it all, we can't fund it back up to $2.5 again without voter approval. So it's fully funded, and no more money will go in, just money will come out to support the projects that we're doing.
That $2.5 is a cap.
Any, any further questions on that?
Thank you, Don.
Do you want me to stay here, Mike, to answer?
Yeah, you might as well. Let's, let's do the motion and get that one taken care of. So is there a motion, as it's worded here, to increase both the tax surcharge reserve and the general liability reserve? Mr. Fafalia, Ms. Owens, all in favor? Approve. The next three, we're going to take together to establish the tax rate, authorize the warrants, and the tax collection deposit agreement with the three towns. So is there a roll call in here somewhere, Connie?
Yes. For the standard tax.
Okay, all right. Don, you want to address all three of those, and then we'll deal with them?
Sure, sure. As the Board probably remembers, when we did our budget vote, we told everybody we were going to have a 3.02% increase in taxes. What invariably happens is the assessed value of property at full value changes over the course of the year. And so when you're assessing your levy, which doesn't change, that dollar amount is fixed over a larger amount of money, the rate goes down. And then the rate between the towns can shift. The apportionment of that levy between the towns of Cicero, Clay, and Salina might change a little bit, depend on those assessed values. And we also had a slight change in the equalization rate in the town of Clay. Clay was, is a partial assessed, partial value town, and their equalization rate changed slightly. So kind of the good news, and the Board may have this in front of them, but so that the rate increase is a 2.02% increase for the town of Cicero, 2.05% for Salina, and 1.58% for Clay, all below the 3.2% the taxpayers approved in May. And that's, that's, you guys have heard this story before. This happens very often as we finalize the tax rates.
Is there a motion to establish the tax rates as presented? Ms. Subota, Ms. McDonald, Connie?
Michael Shusa.
Aye.
Michael Renzio.
Aye.
Yes.
Michael Young.
Yes.
Jacob Allen.
Yes.
Mary Scanlon.
Yes.
See, the authorization of the warrants. Don?
So, so in terms of the actual tax warrant, the Board will sign tonight, approve tonight the warrants. Those are the orders to collect this tax levy, and the warrants go to each of the, each of the towns based on the apportionment of our levy.
And the tax collection deposit agreement?
Tax collection deposit agreement, we, we basically work with the towns of Clay's, we're a Class A town, or those are Class A towns. So our school district, some school districts actually have to hire a tax collector and go collect the taxes. In our case, these towns, county prints the tax bills, the towns actually collect the money on our behalf, and then they keep the money and remit it to the district over the course of the tax collection period. So they do all that work for us, and that's what that agreement allows to take place.
We have a motion for the authorization of warrants and to approve the tax collection deposit agreement. Ms. McDonald, second. Ms. Scanlon, all in favor? E., Don, resolution to waive the Main's Plaza no-build restriction.
So as everybody's seen the activity in Main's Plaza, many, many years ago, and I think this dates back, and forgive me, I don't have my notes right in front of me, but dates back to like the 60s, there was an agreement that when this land was sold by the school district, that restrictions would be put on the building. And we have this no-build restriction that's kind of a remnant of that time for a small parcel that, believe it or not, isn't even part of the construction that you can witness over there today. It's probably something that should have been waived years ago, and so we're just, it's really more of an administrative cleanup, and so our attorneys have advised us. They said, "You really should just waive that. If you don't waive it, the builder's just going to go to court and have it waived anyway because you have no right to retain that waiver." And so we're just asking the Board, as a matter of course, to waive that right.
And they do pay us.
What's that?
They do have to pay us for this. It's a consideration of $1.
Yes.
Okay. So there's a little extra revenue, Don. All right, is there a motion to waive the Main's Plaza no-build restriction? Somebody, please. Mr. Harrington, Ms. Owens, all in favor? Refunding bond resolution. Don?
So is, one of the things we do as a school district is just like your home mortgage, where you might refinance your home mortgage based on better interest rates. We're regularly looking at our outstanding debt and trying to refinance that at better rates, longer-term rates. Sometimes we have short-term debt that we're funding permanently, and others were just consolidating loans, and so that's the case with this. You're authorizing us to go ahead, and I think it's $3.5 million of debt. We only have about 2.8% that's, that's at this time affected, but we'd only do it if the net economics was good to the district. In other words, you'd only refinance your home mortgage if you got a better rate, and that's kind of the concept. You're authorizing us to do this.
Like the bus?
That's, yeah, that's already been, that's already been approved and done. As a matter of fact, we've already taken delivery. I was just over there today inspecting the new buses. They're awesome, beautiful. We got them in there, bonding's been approved.
Don, what happens to the savings if this?
Great question. Remember, I was pointing about that debt service reserve? That, that's where it goes. We can't really just take that and go do other things with it.
Is there a motion to approve the refunding bond resolution? Mr. Leon, Mr. Subota? I don't see a roll call, Connie, so it looks like we're okay. All right, all in favor? E., H., I., J., we're looking down there, K. How many of these things can we take together? Probably all of them. Let's just review them, and then I think we can take them.
Can we do I?
Yeah, we'll talk, yeah, before we do anything, we'll talk about all of them. Recommendation to create a 1.0 FTE special ed teacher at Roxborough Middle. We have a motion for the authorization of warrants and to approve the tax collection deposit agreement. Ms. McDonald, second. Ms. Scanlon, all in favor? E., Don, the resolution to waive the Main's Plaza no-build restriction.
So, as everybody's seen the activity in Main's Plaza, many, many years ago, and I think this dates back, and forgive me, it are my notes right in front of me, but dates back to like the sixties, there was an agreement that when this land was sold by the school district, that restrictions would be put on the building. And we, we have this no-build restriction that's kind of a remnant of that time. For a small parcel that, believe it or not, isn't even part of the construction that you can witness over the other day, it's probably something that should have been waived years ago. And so, we're just, it's really more of an administrative cleanup. And so, our attorneys have advised us. They said, "You really should just waive that. If you don't waive it, the builder's just going to go to court and have it waived anyway because you have no right to retain that waiver." And so, we're just asking the Board, as a matter of course, to waive that right.
And they do pay us.
What's that?
They do have to pay us for this. It's a consideration of one dollar.
Yes.
Okay. So, there's a little extra revenue, Don. All right, is there a motion to waive the Main's Plaza no-build restriction? Somebody, please. Mr. Harrington, Ms. Owens, all in favor? Refunding bond resolution. Don?
So, is, one of the things we do as a school district is just like your home mortgage, where you might refinance your home mortgage based on better interest rates. We're regularly looking at our outstanding debt and trying to refinance that at better rates, longer-term rates. Sometimes we have short-term debt that we're funding permanently, and others were just consolidating loans. And so, that's the case with this. You're authorizing us to go ahead, and I think it's three and a half million dollars of, of debt. We only have about two point eight that's, that's at this time affected. But we'd only do it if the net economics was good to the district. In other words, you'd only refinance your home mortgage if you got a better rate. And that's kind of the concept. You're authorizing us to do this.
Like the bus?
That's, yeah, that's already been, that's already been approved and done. As a matter of fact, we've already taken delivery. I was just over there today inspecting the new buses. They're awesome, beautiful. We've got them and their bonding's been approved.
Don, what happens to the savings? It's this...
Great question. Remember, I was pointing about that debt service reserve? That, that's where it goes. We can't really just take that and go do other things with it.
Is there a motion to approve the refunding bond resolution? Mr. Leon, Mr. Subota? I don't see a roll call, Connie, so it looks like we're, all right, all in favor? E., H., I., J., we're looking down here, K. How many of these things can we take together? Probably all of them. Let's just review them and then I think we can take them. Yeah, we'll talk, yeah, before we do anything, we'll talk about all of them. Recommendation to create a one point zero FTE special ed teacher at Roxboro Middle and abolish a one point zero FTE TA position.
So, I can speak briefly to that. When Mr. Shaw was working on putting his schedule together and working with his special ed staff as a team, up with a concept to kind of pilot a little bit different model in terms of gen ed teachers with special ed teachers, a little more similar to the model at the junior high. What happened? They needed an additional special ed teacher, but it resulted in terms of scheduling.
This is, this is part of the inclusion initiative. So, this isn't something new and different and shiny?
No. This is definitely part of, you know, our inclusion study, our more inclusive model. And we're beginning to focus, you know, our main focus in the beginning was K six, and now we're starting.
So, you mentioned secondary level. So, is this just for the seventh grade?
Seventh grade.
And so, it's just a seventh grade thing?
H., recommendation to abolish a one point oh FTE electronic equipment technician and create a one point oh FTE security systems maintenance specialist. Jason?
Well, as you can imagine, when, years ago, when security systems and video cameras were first being installed, when that was a, a new notion in schools, we had to take one of our existing employees and train them on how to do it. And over the time since then, the, the technology's become more and more complicated and the job has changed. But for many years, we had the same employee, learning as we were growing and becoming a master of that technology. And when we had a retirement of that individual, we had to reassess exactly what the needs are of that position. And we found that an electronic equipment operator just, it does, the job description just does not, does not fit the work that needs to be done. So, after extensive work with the county civil service department, we've actually created a new job title that didn't exist before that meets the exact specifications and allows us to hire someone that has the very specific skills for what we need to maintain all of our systems and keep moving our technology forward.
Questions? Aye. Recommendation to approve the local assistance plan for Roxboro Road Middle School.
So, this is the second year in a row that Roxboro Road Middle School is on a local assistance plan. In the state, as you can imagine, requires a lot of planning, a lot of collaboration between staff members. So, they've met extensively and taken, devised their plan. It's not that before I signed it, sign it and sent it into state ed. Last year, we were fortunate enough that along with that plan, we were, because of that plan, we were able to qualify and fortunate enough to receive a grant allowed for, you've heard us speak about Donna Ryder coming in to do a lot with social emotional learning.
As we sit here, when that data comes in from spring seventeen, what is that? Could we be?
At this point, we've been told that we're on it for another year. Hopefully, the next cycle around, we may be able to, that certainly is our goal.
Um, one of the things that I have a question about is how do they put a quantity or a percentage of growth on, like, one of the things talks about lack of connections with families. Like, how, how do they identify something like that?
How does the state identify it?
Yeah.
They use, they use, not an exact answer?
Doesn't make any sense.
Well, a lot...
I mean, it, I, I just, I'm surprised because I see a disconnect there. I agree with that.
And a lot of it, we feel is those, there's a dis...
More thick on state testing.
Reauthorization agreement with the State of New York Transportation for Shared Services. Don? It's you? Okay, sorry.
So, we're, we're always doing agreements with BOCs and for shared services. And so, that's what that, that's what that agreement's about.
The State of New York?
Oh, sorry. That's, I'm sorry.
No, it's DOT, right?
Oh, yes. This, this one, I apologize. This is our, this is an agreement with DOT to use our fueling. And I think in this case, they're going to, it's the salt and sand.
Storage salt.
Salt, storage, store salt, yeah.
So, they, who stores it?
They actually, it's at...
They store it and we take it from there?
They store it at their facility, and we just take our, our sand from that.
Yeah, we take a piece of it. Okay, good, thanks. K., recommendation to amend the seventeen, eighteen payroll schedule. Annette?
So, it was brought to our attention a couple of weeks ago that due to circumstances with the start of the school year, because we have to, August thirty-first, every so many years, the way payroll schedule falls, it happens there. Twelve-month folks, it happens at the beginning of the cycle, the beginning of the year. Five, ten-month folks, way the first pay period comes in. And so, contract language, we... Have a check on Friday, September eighth, and have...
L., authorization agreement to enter into agreement with before and after-school childcare on location relative to the use of Main Street Building for AM and PM childcare.
I'd like a comment on that question. So...
You want that one?
Yeah, so, Bascal, that's what the before and after school, that's, Bascal is taking over where, where YMCA left off. YMCA, the numbers weren't sufficient for the YMCA at Main Street. And so, we're trying to restart the program with Bascal to provide before and after coverage for folks. And this next year will be a pilot year to see how they do. Hopefully, they'll have the numbers to support the program. And just like we asked the Board to approve the Y program every year, we need, oh, we're going to use our...
M., designated gift for the purchase of the new scoreboard at Michael J. Bregman Stadium. And this is the Jeffrey Gates Foundation has donated five hundred dollars to the North Syracuse Schenkels School District scoreboard sponsorship construct. This is, was a pledge, I assume they're now fulfilling, or is this a new pledge?
It's just another installment.
Just another installment. Then, N., his recommendation to amend the gift acknowledgement from the North Syracuse Education Foundation to the grant winner, pick a seat at Roxboro Elementary School. The amended gift valued at one thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars, sixty-nine cents, accepted as follows, for five lap trays, five ball over ball, twelve disco sit junior, that sounds like fun, and five chair rocker child. Okay. So, we'll have a motion at some point in a minute which would accept that amended gift. So, we need a motion then to take G., H., I., J., K., L., M., and N. as a group. Ms. Scanlon, second. Ms. Owens, all in favor? Retirements, this evening, Susan Castellera, bus driver with thirty-five years of service. So, many thanks and many miles. For sure, we wish you happy and healthy many years in retirement. Personnel, instructional A., board staff B., and administrative C. Annette, on administrative C.
Well, I would like to introduce John Lawrence, who's patiently waiting in the back. Mr. Lawrence, we're recommending that he be appointed this evening as the new Lake Shore Road Elementary School principal with an effective leave starting next Monday morning.
Welcome, John. Is there a motion to approve seven A., seven B., and seven C. as a group? Mr. Marizio, second. Mr. Harrington, all in favor? You're in, John. Can't back out now. Good for you, sir. Thank you. Motion for executive session. For the purpose of hearing a parental appeal of a superintendent's decision to receive an update on five legal matters relative to potential litigation, to receive an update on negotiations with the teacher bargaining unit, and to review the employment record of two individuals with action to follow on the parental appeal. Is there such a motion? Mr. Leon, Ms. Scanlon, all in favor? Okay. Executive session, seven thirty-eight.